The Candidates Forum presented and produced by the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. My name is Susan Rowe and I am a member of the Board of Directors of the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. I am also the moderator for tonight's forum. The Northville Public Schools Board of Education serves Novi Township, City of Novi, Northville, and portions of, I'm sorry, the City of Northville and portions of Novi, Lyon Township, and Salem Township. The board consists of seven members. Members of the board are elected to serve a term for four years on a rotation basis. This term shall commence on January 1st following the election. Tonight, we have eight of the 10 candidates who have filed to be on the ballot, and they are Jonathan Edward Edison, Hari Kulkarni.
Yes, you've got it.
Okay, Lisa McIntyre, James Mazzurriq, Sarah Prescott, Lindsay Wilson, Sherry Winfield, and Kimberly Campbell Voitel. Mr. Mathie and Mr. Miller also on the ballot either dropped out or did not reply to our invitation. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not support or oppose any candidate running for office. The League does not take positions after careful study, however. We may attach our name either in support or opposing a ballot proposal. The League of Women Voters is where hands-on work to safeguard our democracy leads to civic improvement. Membership is open to anyone who is at least 16 years old, and you can join through our website. The League's main mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation in government. One of the ways we do that is by having forums such as this. The League also has prepared nonpartisan voter guides, which can be found online at www.vote411.org. Holding a Candidates Forum by Zoom poses challenges different from an in-person forum. Only League personnel and the candidates are present at the forum. We have solicited questions from the public in advance so that we could ask them at tonight's forum. Questions were screened for clarity, and those which included personal attacks on any candidate were eliminated. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and not of the League of Women Voters. So now, we will get started with our forum. And Carrie, has Mr. Edison come on yet? No? Okay.
Yes, not shown up yet.
Okay, all right then, we will start with introductions. And each candidate will be allowed a one-minute opening statement, a one-minute response to all questions, and a one-minute closing statement. The order that candidates speak was determined by a random selection process which was witnessed by the candidates before the recording of this forum. We will rotate the order of the candidate responding to the questions. Lead member Carrie Moon Dupree, who you have already met, is our timer this evening. She will hold up cards so that the candidates know when their time is up. The candidate must stop when the stop sign appears. Let us begin with our opening statement this evening with Ms. Campbell Voitel.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to join this event tonight. My name is Dr. Kimberly Campbell Voitel. I'm an educator who has served public education for more than 30 years. I recently retired from Wayne State as the Director of Public Health Programs. I'm a clinical nurse specialist with an expertise in disease prevention, and my work has been in schools and in communities focused on kids with chronic conditions like asthma and diabetes and obesity. I am a mother who has graduated two children from the district and now has a granddaughter enrolled. And I know this community and its expectations for excellence. I hope by the end of the evening, you will know me as a candidate who is a thoughtful and careful thinker, who does her homework and does not shy from the hard work of leading positive change. I hope you will also know that I come to you with the belief that I can make an important contribution to the challenges we face today, and together, we will go forward to claim a bright future for our students. Thank you.
Ms. Winfield, you're next.
Good evening. I want to say thank you for allowing me to join you this evening. My name is Sherry Winfield, and I've been a resident of Northville for 16 years. The primary reason my family and I moved to Northville was because of the educational system. I would like to share with you that education has always been important to me. I feel my family has been benefited over the years because the first person to actually receive a graduate degree was my great-grandfather in the 1950s. So it has always been a guiding star in my life. I am a senior HR manager at Ford Motor Company for the past 28 years. I feel it is, my experiences at Ford are very transferable to the Board of Education. I also feel that I represent a voice, a story, and a demographic that is presently missing from the Board of Education. And my firm beliefs are, is that every child deserves a superior education, and I hope that you give me the opportunity to serve you in that capacity. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Mr. Kulkarni.
Hi.
Hello.
Okay, I thought I was the fourth, but anyway. I have demonstrated application or technical interpersonal skill at Ford Motor Company for 44 years. I have a PhD from the University of Tennessee. I've been studying in Northville for the last 12 years. I have two grandchildren at Ridgewood Elementary School. And also, I received two Henry IV awards, as well as I had two patents from the United States. What I'm coming to you is, I like to develop a proactive path for students to build their future career and both in both academic as well as hands-on technical expertise. That's my goal. Thank you for the opportunity, and I'm looking for opportunity to build a technical facility in the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. McIntyre.
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Really quickly, so before we start, I don't want this to affect you both. I think there might be an echo. If people muted, it might not affect you.
Oh yeah, I see that too.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah, Hari, Hari, you're not muted.
If you're not the speaker, please mute, and that will hopefully take care of the echo. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate that, Sarah. Hi, I'm Lisa McIntyre. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm a mother of three kids who are in the Northville Public Schools. We've been in the community for eight years, having moved here from Arizona. I've been an active volunteer, both through gymnastics, and I'm currently the Ridgewood PTA President. I completed my undergraduate at Kalamazoo College and really enjoyed my time in Michigan. I have a master's degree in mental health counseling. I bring that background with me. I think that's really important right now, given our need for wellness, our focus on wellness. My youngest child will graduate from the district in 2030, so I think the time is important for that. As a leader in the Ridgewood PTA, I've demonstrated the ability to identify needs and collaborate with my team to implement fun and innovative programs while engaging the community towards a common goal for staff, students, and families. I think Northville Public Schools would benefit greatly from my presence on the Board of Education as a creative, solution-focused woman who is also a lifelong learner, particularly related to children, mental health, education, and evolving best practices. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person will be Mr. Wilson.
Hi, thank you to the League of Women Voters. My name is Lindsay Wilson. I've lived in Northville for nine years. My wife Julie and I have four kids together here. We live here because of the schools, and I want to give back to them. I think we need multidimensional board members to not only help us get through COVID, but to also help us get to the next level as a district. I'm a father in a blended family. I've also been a single father raising two young daughters on my own. I have degrees from U of M and MSU. I've been a biologist, I've been a chemist. I've managed homes for disabled. I've been a federal prosecutor. And today, I'm counsel to a Fortune 500 company. I have kids at Amberman, Hillside, and Northville High School. I'm very familiar with district partner programs like New Hope. Why? Because my family has been affected by mental health issues and grief, an issue that the district has faced itself. As a board member, I would focus on five things. Getting through COVID together, student health, happiness, and inclusion, continuous improvement. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker will be Mr. Mazzurriq.
Hi, how you doing? My name is Jim Mazzurriq. I'm a resident of the district for 29 years. I've got two children and a wife, Suzanne. One of my children graduated already. Another is still at Northville High School. Some of you may know, I've been on the Northville School Board from 2010 and left in 2018. I have a bachelor's degree in engineering and a master's or an MBA from Michigan State University. I'm entering this race again simply because Northville has history of excellent education. And we're going through some very tough times right now, completely changing our methods of teaching. But I think it's really important that we look at what we're doing now to make sure that we carry that same tradition of excellence for the future. I look forward to telling you more about myself, my background, and what I stand for. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. And the last presenter is Ms. Prescott.
Hi, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and all voters out there who are tuned in to this presentation. I am Sarah Prescott. I am on the Board of Education currently. I am the only person running for reelection of the four seats that are coming open. I am also a long-term resident of Northville. I have lived here for 15 years with my family. I have three kids under the age of 11. And I have a degree from Northwestern and also a law degree. I went to Harvard Law School and moved to Northville for the, well, I moved to Michigan for the jobs and Northville for the schools. Like many on this call, I'm called to serve our district because I want it to be the best it can be, and I hope to get to know you a little bit here tonight and express some of my priorities and goals. And let's get to it.
Thank you very much. We will now go into our questions. And we will start with, since Ms. Voitel started the introductions, we'll start the questions with Ms. Winfield. So this will be this question, the same question for all of you. What qualities do you think make a good school board member? Ms. Voitel? Oh, you're muted. Can you start her time again, Carrie?
Oh.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you said Sherry was going to start.
Oh, you're right. My error, I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Winfield, thank you.
Ms. Winfield, you're muted.
Thank you. The qualities that I think make a good school board member are qualities that I presently possess. I first think you have to have a passion for children and their learning. I also think that a school board member has to be approachable and empathetic. I also think a school board member has to be forward-thinking and a very good problem solver in a collaborative manner. I believe in hearing the voice of the many versus the voice of the few. My years at Ford Motor Company as a human resources professional has uniquely qualified me to solve problems. I believe in continuous improvement, so much so that I negotiated that part of the contract for 2015. I am currently the co-chair of the UAW for Continuous Improvement Committee, and I look forward to building on the excellence that is already Northville. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kulkarni, same question. And you're muted, please unmute.
Can you hear me now? Okay. I'm a problem solver for almost 44 years. I also work with many, many people. So I wish to use that technique for the benefit of students and the community. And that's where I stand. And I also like to work concerned about COVID. But COVID is also a reactive plan. What I like to develop is a proactive plan for to build the future of the students and the community. To me, that is a top priority. The reason it is top priority is because once the students come out, they need to face the real challenge of the world. And that's where I stand for. And you know what? I could lead the students technically, as well as both academic as well as technical sides. And that's what our contribution to the school. And that's where I stand for. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre, same question.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I believe that a great school board member would possess the characteristics of being humble, collaborative, able to reach across large groups of diverse people to be able to engage with the community in terms of connecting with parents, connecting with students, connecting with direct care educators, as well as administrators, to work towards creative problem solving, especially given this unique time in history that the pandemic is presenting. I also believe that, like Sherry said, a forward thinker, someone who is prepared to dive deeply into some of the issues that present as barriers for education. I think an understanding of health and wellness is really important, given the pandemic. Also, I believe understanding special needs children and how that influences the needs that our district can address, given funding requirements. So I think having a vast array of understanding of all the different pieces that play a role into providing a world-class education, as well as arts and athletics, those are also important.
Okay, thank you very much. And Mr. Wilson.
Hi, thank you. The qualities I think that make a great board member are, first and foremost, you need to be multidimensional in terms of your experience, your educational background, the degree to which you're involved in the community. I think all that helps to make you experienced, facile with facts, making big decisions. I think you have to have, to be an effective leader here, you need to have multiple connections in the district. I have three kids. I've been a father in a blended family, a single dad. I know what it's like for families. I see my kids every day working in this district, logging them into Schoology. You also need to be decisive. I work for a corporation for which I've helped them make hundreds, if not thousands, of critical decisions around corporate strategy and countless other areas of the law. So multidimensional, multiple connections, decisive, and you need to relish hard work like I do.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Mazzurriq?
Thank you.
Having spent eight years on the board, let me tell you some of the experiences I had about what's important. A collaborator of nature, recognized as a board member, no one person gets to make a decision. It's really about dialoguing, sharing information, and being willing to listen. I remember many times on the board, I came into a situation having one opinion. But by listening to other board members, I was able to learn some things or information I didn't know beforehand, which then changed my opinion. That ability to listen, be collaborative, being unemotional, and really putting the priority on the kids as their number one is really the most important thing. I mean, willingness to work is really important. I mean, this job is not easy. You'll probably find out that it will be 500 hours of time you devote, which is really a quarter of a full-time job. So to put in that kind of effort, that kind of time, it takes dedication, it takes passion. But more than anything else, it's a collaborative nature, willing to listen, and when there's information out there, trying to find the balance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Prescott.
Hi, everyone. Like Jim, I have some ideas from seeing great members of the board. I think as everything in life, it's helpful if you're smart, if you're prepared, if you're a hard worker, if you're thoughtful, if you're detail-oriented, if you can both see the forest and the trees. You have to be able to think on multiple levels and multiple speeds. Like all things in life, we seek balance. People who are balanced and steady. I think it's important, and I pride myself very much on being an independent thinker. I agree that being a team player is critical. I think it's important to be apolitical. We are fiduciaries for this community. We are not there for ourselves. And I think along that line, probably the most important thing is being able to pivot. If you lose a vote, you then have to turn to asking, how can I make this the best it can be? I didn't win, it's not my way. How can I contribute and make what we're doing the best it can be? So those would be on my list.
Thank you very much. Okay, now it's Ms. Campbell Voitel.
Well, you know, I have to say that I find that I'm in alignment with the comments that all of the wonderful candidates have made, and that I have the advantage of being the last speaker. I think what I could add to these good reflections is the emphasis, two things come to mind. One is that you must be an active conduit to the community, both representing the board's priorities and the district's goals and vision, but also hearing back from the community what their needs and interests and concerns are. The second attribute that I think is important is ethical behavior. Fair, being just, impartial in your decisions, seeking to treat people respectfully, and seeking involvement in my decision-making from the people who elected me to serve, and always remembering that. So ethical behavior and connection with the community, two ways, are the two aspects that I'd like to add to the list.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next question. And we will begin with Carrie, if that's what he prefers to be called. You'll have to unmute yourself, Harry. Okay, the next question is, what do you see as your specific role and responsibility as a board member?
As a board member, I think I can, my contribution to this school system is like a technical hands-on training. That's what is required. Right now, that is not there. And even though it is there, the students are sent to the Loria School. So what I like to do is, I like to establish facility and work with the students to give them a training or hands-on training so that they can use academic skill to develop innovative projects and develop, what do you call, creativity in their mind. And they need to understand that once they go out, they need to face the world. That's my concern, and I like to work towards that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. McIntyre, the same question.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think the role of a school board member is, it's important to take it very seriously. I think that there's a lot of responsibility for the board members to connect with the community, to see themselves as kind of guides and the support of the community goals, as well as the responsibility to manage the money in a sound way and be careful in terms of how we address programming, how we address all the different needs of the community based on the educational goals. So I think the role of the board member is multifaceted as well, that I think board members wear many different hats in terms of understanding education, in terms of understanding legal issues, in terms of understanding funding, understanding what parents expect and are looking for, as well as the priority always is on the students, and how do we deliver the most, the best academic programming that we can, given the situation that we're in. So I think that's, it's a big job. I think it's something that people need to take seriously as we jump into this.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, same question.
Hi, thank you. I think the primary role of a board member in the board is to ensure that our kids get the best education quality possible. We're members of a board, we're members of a team. Others have said it, we're collaborating, we're a team. I've coached teams, I've been a member of teams. I think one of the big keys to being a board member is knowing and living by its standards of practice. I think one of the best documents that I reviewed in my time preparing for this role is the standards of practice. I think they're very important. Again, the board speaks with one voice. I think that's really important. You just have to love it, you have to love the hard work, you have to love the kids, and you have to want to devote your time to it. And I think that's what the role is and the qualities that make a good board member.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Mazzurriq?
So let me give you my opinion on it. One, we represent the community. But in reality, we have three roles. Our job is to set policy for the district. And we do that in the numerous... The second role is to manage the budget, and we do that through looking at all the expenditures and approving things or providing guidance on where we think we should spend the money. And the third role is actually the fact that we have one employee in the district, and that's a superintendent. So our roles are to be the representative for the community, looking at policy, managing the budget, and then looking at our superintendent, who's really the CEO of the district, and providing guidance to her. And really, she's the only person that we actually give a performance review. So that's my summary.
And thank you. Ms. Prescott.
So my view is that everything you need to know about the role is in its name. When you're elected to the Board of Education, you are a trustee. And you need to be someone in whom the community can repose its trust, that you have our children and our entire community under your wing, and that you are looking at the community's interests and the school district as a whole and all of its interests, and each individual child and family's interests as a trustee, someone that can be trusted to the utmost. We are also role models. We speak, and the community listens. And when somebody speaks intemperately or unadvisably, it's a problem, and our district deserves wonderful role models. Finally, every good team needs players with different skills. And everyone on the board brings something unique, and hopefully, we'll talk a little bit more about that. But I think that we are better as we are strong, contributing individual, different professional skills.
Okay. And Dr. Campbell Voitel, do you prefer just Dr. Voitel?
You can, Kim Voitel is fine. It's, but that's fine too, Dr. Voitel is fine.
Okay.
As board members, I do, we do function as a collective. I think one of the aspects, yes, we are fiduciary, and we have responsibility to ensure that we have sufficient resources for the district to attain its vision and its goals for its kids. And yes, we do provide oversight for the superintendent, who we hire and evaluate, actually. But I think another aspect that we haven't touched on yet tonight is the fact that the school board envisions the future for the school district. And with that forward vision, it helps to define the goals and strategies to reach that vision, and then monitors the school's progress toward that. And so I think that for the 35,000-foot view, the idea to envision and work collectively toward achieving excellence in this district is one of the key responsibilities for the school board.
Thank you. And Ms. Winfield?
Okay. So I have thought about this, and my thinking is, well, there's certainly administrative roles. I think the more higher-serving role of a board member, honestly, is that we're custodians of our children's future. I think that we are responsible for ensuring that each and every child is developed academically. And when I say academically, I don't just mean, you know, the ABCs and the fundamentals of reading and math, as a whole person who will ultimately contribute to the success of our community and the success of our country. I believe we are strong advocates and should be strong advocates on behalf of the children. And also, we should be partners with their parents in developing options that further the district's goal, and we're also responsible to the community. Because ultimately, I believe that strong schools produce strong children and who grow into adults who produce strong communities.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next question. If you are elected, what role do you see social media playing as your, I guess, pulpit to communicate with the members of the school district? And we start with Ms. McIntyre.
I think social media is such a critical piece. I think it can be used as such a great tool to help people collaborate. to help people collaborate, connect, and share about the concerns that they have or the strengths that they're seeing. I think that as a school board member, I think even as a PTA leader right now, I think I already demonstrate integrity in terms of what I present to people. I think I bring balance as a social media user. And I think it's very important to continue to be a role model and kind of set the standard for our community, and obviously invite people to collaborate and share their perspectives. I think it can be tricky. I think there's also limits that need to be established as far as how social media can be misused. I think as a school board member, helping the district look at ways that they can engage more with the community through social media would be very important. But knowing that people are watching school board members as role models, so being very sensitive to that, to me currently, is very important. I take that very seriously. Thank you. I think that's a great question.
Thank you. Same question for Mr. Wilson.
I think, like some of the other folks on the panel here, it's so important, social media. I've talked to parents and folks in the community here who, they need information. Communication and messaging is so important, especially in these sorts of times. I think we need to communicate often across the board using email, the website, Facebook, Instagram. To communicate with kids these days, you might even want to communicate by way of TikTok. So I think there's a lot of opportunities to communicate to people. They'll find the way that they, you know, interact best with the school and the district in finding information. So I think, you know, one of the big things that I would want to do is speak with one voice, one board voice across the spectrum. I also think, though, as a board member, you have to be careful on social media. Again, the board speaks with one voice. It's very easy to get comments out into the world and create some significant problems. But on the whole, I think social media is great.
Thank you. Mr. Missourik, same question.
So social media is here to stay. It's not going away. Like any tool, it can be used as a positive, and it can also be used as a negative. We've seen some things recently, how it has kind of backfired and hurt people. I think a good point that was mentioned just a short time ago is we speak as a single team, one voice, that the board has to communicate as one voice. As soon as individual board members kind of stray and start, you know, doing their own thing, it does create confusion in the district. So social media is a tool. We need to use it as a listening tool to hear kind of what's going on in the community. But as an individual tool for individual board members, we need to be very, very cautious. One, we have to recognize that our personal thoughts can be very damaging to the board as a whole. And we also have to be careful that if we put something out there personally, people may think it's direction when it really isn't. And so we like to say on the board that the speaker for the board is the president, and the rest of us should...
Thank you, Mr. Missourik. Your time is up. Okay, Ms. Prescott.
I think that the key to this question is looking at the difference between oneself and what you're serving as a greater purpose. And so my response would echo some of these other comments. As an individual, we've had a number of confrontations internal to the board in my five years of service, where people may rightly feel, hey, I'm elected, I'm a speaker, I'm a leader of this community, and I've been put here by the people, and I'd like to voice my opinion. But I think that the right way to think about this is that when you join the board, you become part of something larger, and you have a larger responsibility, even if your voice otherwise would be heard. And so my view is that the district should be using social media in approved ways and savvy ways, like some other speakers have mentioned. The individual has to have the larger picture in mind.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott. Dr. Voitel, unmute.
Okay. So I would say that I might be reflecting a generational difference. Yes, I see the power of social media. I also can see the many potholes that one can fall into. And I also can see that without constant attention, social media can really be rather ineffective. You've got to keep track, you've got to respond, you've got to update, you've got to manage. It suddenly starts taking your time. So I agree with that there are some advantages, but frankly, I would give some, I don't know, I think my tendency would be to curtail my time on social media and to respectfully step into the umbrella of the board's communication. Yes, it is the superintendent and the board president who speaks for the district and for the board, and then to use my personal networks to try to stay relevant and in contact with the families that I serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Winfield.
I think this is a really interesting question. You know, I see social media, I see the goods, I see the bad. But as far as the board's concerned, I see it as another tool. And I see it as a pretty vital tool in these times of COVID. By now, the board meetings being virtual, it's really opened up an opportunity for more people, you know, to participate in the board meetings and have their voices heard, you know. So I think that part is good because we get the community engagement. But what I would say is, I wouldn't want it to take the place of personal engagement with people. I still think that that part is important. And I think that we, as board members or prospective board members, should just always be mindful and be respectful and polite in conducting ourselves. It's just another tool that we can conduct business on. That's my feelings.
Thank you. Harry, the next speaker.
I do respect social media. The reason is that's where we can communicate with the community, students, and the parents altogether. In a meeting I attended so far, the board of my meetings, and I do know that parents are coming there and expressing their voices. And to me, I like it very much because we can really hear what their needs are, what we can do, and how we can satisfy the needs of the students. To me, that is most important. And social media can be also a positive as well as negative. And I like to use the positive side for the board member to use it. And board members should speak only one voice, either social media or even in public. That way, we all know that we are united and we are facing the critical situation, and we are there for the good for the community as well as for the students. That's where I go, social media should be used for. Thank you.
Next question, and this, we will start with Mr. Wilson. How do you see yourself as working as a team to rebuild the board after the forced resignation of the previous board chair? Mr. Wilson.
Great, great question. I think, you know, one of the reasons that I entered into this candidacy was because I saw this wonderful district that my kids and I and my family are a part of really being dragged through the mud. We moved here for the schools, and when we saw, you know, the news in the press about statements from a board member being made, kind of what I thought was the reprehensible nature of the comments, that really got me paying attention. And I think we have some work to do now to repair things, to repair our reputation internally and externally. I think we need to show the district that we can, in fact, work as a team, a unified collection of seven voices that is unified behind one mission. So I want to remove the divisiveness and politics from the situation and really repair our reputation as a board so we can be effective.
Thank you. Mr. Missourik, same question.
So, I mean, some of the same things that I think were said, but I think we need to build trust. I think the events that have happened over the last two or three months have certainly impacted the trust that some of our community has in us. I think we need to make sure to remove the politics from the board. I think we need to go back to the concept of dialogue, where we listen to each other's opinions, and we can be on different sides of the table, yet we can still come together. And I think we need to show that we're listening to our community. And I think the whole nature of being online is actually going to help repair that. But, you know, I'm just going to reiterate those three things. We have to rebuild the trust. We need to, you know, remove the politics from it and really show listening skills to our community, and then taking that information and delivering on what our community wants. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Prescott, same question.
Serving on this board during the period that's referenced in the question has been one of the most challenging aspects of COVID-19, and that's saying a lot for me. It has been very difficult for me to watch our relationships fray. I don't think sometimes the hardest problems come with the hardest answers, though. And to me, this is very simple. Number one, the board needs to build its relationships with one another, and we need to maintain respect for ourselves and the positions that we hold. And I have worked very hard for five years, and I have some very good relationships within this board. And I think we need to keep that front and center. But the other piece of this is the real key, and that is focusing on children and why we are here. And if we keep our eyes on that focus, that's the solution to me.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott. Same question to Dr. Voitel.
This is a nonpartisan position. And I think, as a whole, the board does a pretty good job of preserving that and respecting that aspect of the work. I've spoken to many past board members, and they can't recall ever there being politics inserting itself as much as it has lately. I tend to think that this is a reflection, I think, of the larger forces in society. And politics is inserting itself into our classrooms and all hallways in our schools as well, so we're not any different. But I think if we commit ourselves to the just and ethical behavior that I referenced earlier, and respect, and listen to one another, and agree that there might be divergence in opinion, but when we vote, we come together and we are committed to the success of that decision. I think that the district will see that, and they will be reaffirmed that we are a functioning board. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Winfield.
You know, I think first and foremost, it's nonpartisan for a reason. You know, I don't think any child is born knowing they're going to be in any particular political affiliation. And, you know, as I said earlier, I believe we're the custodians of our children's future. So I really think that needs to be the North Star. Earlier it mentioned to you, I've done lots of negotiations at Ford. And, you know, seemingly, you come in on opposite sides. But one of the things that we do and we strive to do is to look for the common thread, the common ground. Why are we all here? And we are all here to make sure our children get a great education and develop into wonderful, aspiring, responsible, contributing members of society. You know, so with that, I think we really have to stay focused on what are the district's goals and what is best for our children, and we need to build the relationship to ensure that we deliver that.
Thank you, Ms. Winfield. Harry, same question.
One of the questions I have here is, sorry, one of the answer I have is, we should have censorship. Before you put on anything on the board or public, somebody should examine it, make sure that it really does not affect the community, because community comes first. And that's where, you know, I stand for, because I have seen at Ford Motor Company, where anything you want to publish, it goes through the lot of censorship. So that way, we can avoid this miscommunication and concern that the community has. Because we are here to build the future of the students. That's where the goal is. Sorry, did I stop? Or I didn't follow you?
No.
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 Okay. Because we are here for the benefit of the community and the students. That's where we stand for. The board has to be together, and anything that is published must be censored so that we cannot govern, we can miscommunicate with the world and create more confusion. That's where we should stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre.
Yeah, I think that there's a lot of healing that needs to happen within the board and within the community. And that's one of the reasons that I stepped up to run, because I do think that my mental health background and just understanding of those stress reduction skills that are so important given this time. I think really that the focus of the board needs to be on being the standard bearers for our community, that working together to stay focused on that goal of providing a great education for all of our students and our community, knowing that we each bring something different to the role, and yet really appreciating that each of us are focused on the same task, which is supporting the kids and families and the staff who are providing the direct education. So I think that working on those team-building skills, collaborating with each other, knowing that we each come from a different perspective, but yet our focus is the kids. I chose purple for my logo color because I think it is a nonpartisan role, and our focus is the kids. So if I could have picked the kids' color, I don't know what that would have been, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next question, and this will go to Mr. Missourik, starting. What is your commitment to diversity and inclusion? And if you could please give us a concrete action that you feel you need to do to get there?
Let me start with a fact about the district. I don't think people realize how diverse our district is. Twenty-five percent of our students actually come from a household where English is not the native speaking language. I think we speak over 50 different languages in our district. And I think when you look at our district, you realize that our kids are actually much better with the whole social aspect and diversity than maybe the parents are, right? I think we, as a board, need to be very sensitive to what's going on right now. I worry bullying and the use of social media, being used in a very negative manner in our district by our kids. And I think we, as parents, have to set the tone and set the example. I think as an individual board member, I'm going to be focusing on that and looking at kind of the pulse of the children and making sure that those issues don't create a problem.
Thank you. Ms. Prescott.
I'm a civil rights lawyer, so I could talk on this subject for hours. And I teach in this area, and it's a passion of mine. I think we can do a lot more. I've advocated diverse hiring, working on retention of our diverse faculty. I'm the only board member who attended, Ms. Winfield's daughter arranged an incredible march to show our solidarity. I'm the only person who attended. I recently helped our outside council redo our Title IX policies because this is my area, this is my wheelhouse, and as I've said, my passion. I think we also, we'll go back to, harken to the idea of modeling. We are leaders of our community, and we should be modeling the importance of these issues in everything we do and say. And I would really encourage people, I love the art display of all the kids in the school holding up their whiteboards saying why they are unique and different and what they contribute to the fabric of our community. If you haven't seen it, it's just one visible representation of our commitment to these issues.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott. Dr. Voitel, you have to unmute.
Yes, I was so interested in listening to the previous... I have to work on my mute. I, you know, in public health, you've got to be concerned with diversity, equity, and inclusion. So it does fall into my wheelhouse, too. I would say priority for me is first that every child is safe in our buildings, that they are not subject to harassment, negative comments, bullying on any level. I think that, secondly, I do believe that we, our district should become an exemplary district, where we are on front, on the front page, proclaiming our absolute commitment to celebrating... Proclaiming our our absolute commitment to celebrating and ensuring inclusion and equity. So I am very attracted to the the Norfield Cares project. I have, well, I won't be able to describe it at all in detail, but it is a student involved project leading us forward, and it should involve us from top to bottom. In addressing inclusion and equity and diversity in our in our district. So bravo to the students.
Thank you. Ms. Winfield.
Okay, I'm gonna share a personal story, and I hope I can stay within my time limits. But this was one of the number one reasons that I decided to seek a position on the school board, and actually it surrounds my youngest daughter. When she was in eighth grade, I came home early one day. I saw her getting off the school bus. She didn't expect me to be home early that day, and I could tell something was wrong. And as I approached her, she was crying. And the reason she was crying is that she told me she had been on a field trip. And she sat in her seat and somebody had written a racial slur, the N word, on the window of the school bus. We immediately went to the school, had a conversation with the principal. I was promised action. And I'll be honest with you, I was not satisfied with the action that I received. If I go backward, my oldest daughter never had any experiences like that. So I'm very dismayed about what is going on in our district. I think it needs to be paid more than just lip service. I think we're better than that, and I've seen that we're better than that. And to be honest with you, my youngest daughter was the catalyst because as a parent, I didn't feel like I did enough. And when the call came out on the call to say, hey, run for office, I decided to do something because I want to make a difference for all children regardless of their race.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Winfield. Harry, same question. Harry, you have to unmute.
Okay, diversity brings a lot of good things. It is not a negative. What is happening here is we are looking at a diversity as a negative point of view, but. Knowing the culture of a different part of the world, knowing the how people dressed, how they behave. You know, every we are coming from a different background, so we need to emphasize the positive aspects of diversity, not the negative aspects. So what is happening here is we are all focused on negativity, so we get a negative response. But if you if you go for the positive response, you will get positivity as well as people will together. When the children are playing, they are children first. They should play with anybody because it doesn't matter where they come from. The children are children, parents are parents, and that's where I stand for the, we should look at it from the positive side. So that we can understand the culture of different part of the world, how people behave, how they're dressed, and that is mostly important for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you. Diversity and inclusion is one of the big reasons that I stepped up to run as well, but I really see that our district could really. Benefit from some deeper exploration of what are the what are the unconscious bias that administration brings, that board members might bring to the role. And I think that the board hasn't been very diverse in the past. So I think looking at ways that we can expand diversity as a leadership group for our district. I would encourage, I look at these types of things, starting from the top down, that I'm excited to about the Norfield Cares opportunity. I think it's really important for. Each person who's coming into a leadership role in our community. We are so diverse. There are so many languages being spoken. There are so many different kinds of families, and I think that there's been a history of kind of avoiding that. So starting to do some of that work as a board with the administration to really start to put some actual action steps into place, also related to hiring, I think. Making a more, creating a more diverse staff that provides. Education is important.
Thank you, and Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Inclusion is one of my big priorities as well. I think about inclusion very broadly across a wide spectrum of kids and types of individuals. I think about race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, financial status, social status. I want every kid in this district to be able to take full advantage of the opportunity here in the district. We have a wonderful district, but it needs to be extended to every kid here. There are kids in this district that feel this small. We can change that. The one concrete action that I would have is I would not leave it to the folks that need the help to do the work. The folks that have the ability to change and do the work need to be the ones that do it, and I would get out, just like a number of the folks on the panel have said tonight. And actually get out, show support for causes, show up at events, show up in the schools. That's the concrete action I would take.
Okay, thank you. Our next question will be. What do you see is the most pressing issue for educators in the district today? And we start with. Ms. Prescott.
Jim, you went first. I didn't want to step on you. You went first last time.
No, sir, I think you're the lead on this one.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll be quick. I know what our teachers tell us. I am incredibly tapped into our teachers' feedback. We received fifty-two pages of single-spaced comments from a recent staff survey. I spent. Incredible amount of time reading every single line. And what I see is the teachers are very concerned with evaluation. Something the community probably doesn't know a lot about, and obviously COVID-19 came after the survey. COVID-19 turned their whole world upside down, but we're gonna emerge from COVID-19. So I want to speak to what I know are underlying key issues, and that is the teachers are concerned with evaluation. My belief is parents should be concerned as well. Because the evaluation tool that we have can be improved on. There are concrete ways to do it, including the way we. Schedule and the number of observations we have for teachers. Right now, the way we're doing things takes our principals out of a coaching and development role for our teachers. And so that can be improved on, and it will be something.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott. Dr. Boital, same question.
I too have been moving through the district and speaking with teachers and. Most recently, the what's on their mind is their safety. Now, part of that was amplified while we were still making the decision about how we were gonna bring kids back into the building, but it certainly hasn't gone away. And with all of the news that we get from other kinds of local adjacent school districts with outbreaks in their schools. It it does trickle down on the stress of our teachers. So, you know, we have teachers who have many good, excellent years in this district, but they have chronic conditions themselves. And so I support all the efforts to redeploy those teachers to reduce their exposures and and risk. And I also give a tribute to the to the board for coming up with scenarios that allow teachers to teach virtually. As well as to minimize exposures when they're in the classroom with smaller cohorts. So safety was the issue for my teacher informants.
Thank you. Ms. Ms. Winfield.
I would agree. I think it's safety during COVID-19. Clearly, it's not anything that we had anticipated in January, and it's a pandemic after all. As I was hearing and seeing the board and the committees work through the various options, I wasn't exactly sure where the teacher's voice was in this. And you can see almost every school has openings, so clearly it's an issue. One of the things that I can bring that I did not expect to get skills in this year that I did was I am on the task force at Ford. And we developed the health and safety protocols to bring our people back to work safely. I work in manufacturing. We had exhaustive days figuring all of this out, but we did have a successful return to work. And it has worked really well, where most of our employees have stayed healthy. And that is something I think that I could contribute to the board going forward, the health and safety of our kids and our teachers as well.
Thank you. Harry, same question. Hope you have to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
You muted again.
Okay, so what I would go for the teachers, I would like to recognize their contribution. Because more recognize the contribution, teacher will like to stay together. And offer them comparable salary and the benefits that are offering in the neighborhood schools. And also reduce number of students per teacher, because they can spend good time and enjoy their time. Because moment you know becomes like a more harshness for them, they feel like going to different school. But more have, you know, more they have good time with the students, they like to stay together and enjoy together. That's where the we are here to make it good for the students, and that's what they should feel like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre.
I think the most pressing issue I'm hearing from teachers right now as PTA president is really the amount of work that they're trying to. Do in a short amount of time, being prepared to deliver quality content to students in a totally unfamiliar setting, whether it's virtually. Or the hybrid, and then lots of changing, some changing expectations in terms of class time. Having difficulty engaging with their students. And I think these will be barriers that will continue to exist over the next period as we are trying to work so hard to ensure safety in our district. So I think they want to provide the same quality education. The principles are stretched. It's difficult for them to coach and guide. And I think the the level of stress that our staff are feeling mimics what we saw the nurses and the doctors enduring the very early stages of COVID-19. So I think what I'm hearing is that our teachers really need so much support from families and from the board in terms of. Telling them they're doing a great job and we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson.
That's such a great question. I I think the the most pressing issue that we face. On the long term is teacher and principal retention. I've seen so many teachers and principals come and go in the schools. Where my kids have been, I think, you know, really great principals are really important to a school. And I think teachers are, they're the lifeblood for me. They've gotten me and my family through some tremendously difficult situations. They're a wonderful resource in our community. I think they need to be heard. They need to be supported. They need to feel that from the top down. That that message, that support should come from the board, from the superintendent, from the administration, from principals right on down. At at our corporation where I work, we believe in continuous improvement. I would regularly survey teachers, see how they're thinking, see what their concerns are, and zero in on the the issues that they're facing because they change at any given moment. It's a dynamic world out there, and we need to address their concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Mizurik.
So my opinion is education is the number one issue that we're facing. Our teachers love to teach. The problem that we're facing right now is we have fundamentally changed the game on them. They were used to teaching face to face, and we gave them some technology tools. We basically pulled that completely out from underneath them, pulled them that they are gonna be teaching online or in a hybrid mode. And really, it's fundamentally different methodology of teaching than in classroom face to face. And there's a lot of stress going on because of that. You hear still parents calling in to saying, hey, I'm not getting enough time, or my kids aren't doing enough and everything else, and. I don't think it's it's fair, some of the criticism that's happening of of the teaching going on right now. I think that fundamentally, the skills have changed. We need, as a district and as a board, look for the best practices, and we need to help our teachers with those skills, the tools and the training to make them successful. Leaving them on their own is gonna be damaging for all of us.
Thank you. Okay. Next question, and we will start with Dr. Boital again. Where would you get your sources of information and which to base your decisions on COVID-19 policies that may be presented to the board?
Well, we have. We have authoritative sources that we can draw on, certainly the CDC and and Johns Hopkins are. Providing good science. But we also have the guidance from our state Department of Education, who sets the specs. For how we operate in the state and our governor and her task force. Presented this, the specifications that guided our back to school. So I think that there's plenty of. Multi-levels of information that we can use, but certainly the disease process information comes from medical experts. In public health and the the implications for school operations would come from our state educational association. And our district and our our county leaders too.
Thank you. Ms. Winfield.
I would certainly look to the medical professionals, the CDC, the World Health Organization. I mentioned the task force that I was on at work. We also have a global task force in which we meet twice a week and we look at all of the trends actually around the world. And we pay attention to, you know, where is it spiking, where is it, you know, starting to get better? And we base our safety protocols off of that. And for the most part, I would say it has worked pretty well in giving our employees a sense of comfort. That they're cared about and that we're taking the measures necessary to keep them safe, and we should do no less for our children.
Thank you. Harry, same question. Nope, you muted yourself. Unmute.
Okay, I do get information from the doctors or who are medically fit to express their opinion. I would listen to that and try to implement their opinion in the school. Instead of talking about politics, we're more concerned about the safety and the health. And that's where the doctors and the medical professionals are coming to guide us. That include both psychiatrists as well as doctors and all kinds of doctors. And you know, the teacher's health as well as students' health and community health is most important. To me, I would make a decision based on collectively all the information that I get, like so many state provides so many guidelines. Like a phase four, phase five, phase six, as well as the local area, what are the phases that are going through it? See, for example, this situation happened worst when the state has to go back in Upper Peninsula from phase five to phase four. That's very bad for the schools. That's where I stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre.
I think during COVID-19, it's been very easy to become overloaded with all of the information that's out there. So I think for me, I would look at Johns Hopkins. They have such a great database in terms of local cases and statewide cases. The CDC guidelines are helpful. I think there's been a lot of politicization, politicization, if that's the right way to say it, of that issue through the CDC. I think there's been a lot of misinformation or lots of changes. It's hard to follow. I think following the state guidelines, listening to Gretchen Whitmer and some of those guidelines, but they're not always area specific. So I think paying attention to the current cases that are happening in our community has been very helpful. I think that our superintendent is aware of what's happening. I think she's connected. I think we're getting good information. My hope is that as students do return to in-person school, that that people are still transparent, because I think in order to have good data, you have to have good reporting, so that also includes testing. But maintaining safety for kids, teachers and families is most important during this return to school period.
Mr. Wilson.
It's hard to name sources that haven't been named already. I think the CDC and their guidelines are probably the number one. Johns Hopkins is great. I think where we really need to spend a little more time is really building relationships across the state with other superintendents. Other board members in different districts, finding out how they're dealing with the issue, what they're seeing. You know, we see small pockets of COVID popping up here and there. I think having those relationships on a one-on-one basis that board members, superintendents can reach out. And get information about how it's spreading and what kind of situations in our schools, who's giving it to who, is it on sports teams, is it in kids' clubs? I think those kind of relationships and those kind of, those kinds of pocket of interactions can really help us to figure out locally how we handle things around COVID.
Thank you. Mr. Mizurik.
I don't think there's any one location that we look for information. I agree, we need to look at the medical field. Look at guidance from doctors and experts in the state, the CDC and things like that. We need to also look for best practices, so look at what other districts have been doing. We're all trying slightly different things and how we're doing it, and some of us are gonna find out to be more successful than others. And the key is to find out who's doing well, and then can we replicate those things? The other thing is I think we need to look locally, right? We need to see what's going on in our local community. Mary Kay has a pretty good handle on that. But but we need to not base our decisions based on what's happening in the Upper Peninsula or in Detroit or someplace else. We need to look at what's happening in our, in our city of Northville and the surrounding areas. So I think it's a balanced approach. We look at, you know, the medical community, we look at other districts and we look at our local data.
Thank you. Ms. Prescott, same question.
So I certainly would regard the CDC as authoritative and State Departments, Department of Education, the American Academy of Pediatrics study I thought was was important. I think it's very vital to look beyond headlines and reporting because if you are a casual reader of headlines, you will miss the science. I was trained in biology at Northwestern, which only tells me that I don't know enough about epidemiology to to be an epidemiologist or opine. It also makes me a little bit nervous about reacting anecdotally to what other communities may be saying or doing or what the latest thing may be somewhere else. I think that it's very important to be humble about what we know and what we don't know and to identify the unknowns so that we can be careful as we consume science. And as somebody trained in science, my view is the only answer to science is more science. So I certainly think that this is an ongoing process of checking what we know.
Thank you. Okay, this will be actually our last question for the evening. Where are, rather, what are your thoughts on choosing textbooks for students at each grade level? And we start with Ms. Winfield.
You know, I would say for the most part, I have been okay with the textbooks that are chosen. What I would add is I would like to see more of a diversity in the textbooks that are entered into the classrooms to help round out our children's knowledge of the world, different cultures, different people. That's really more of my thoughts around textbooks. Thank you.
Thank you. Harry. Unmute.
You know what? Along with the textbook, I would also recall include one more thing that we need to recall, find out how good citizens like Bill Gates, Steve Jobs, they are doing it. And we should emphasize their work so that we, along with the textbooks, the student understand what what it takes to be a good citizen and contributing to the local school community as well as to the country. So the textbook has to come from many, many places that include all the diversity. Because as I mentioned earlier, diversity is also looking at it from positive side. And more we look at the positive side, the more we are better off. So I would really include the good people, good work on the people as well as diversity around the world, what is happening there. So that way they are well prepared for the future of the students. That's where I come from. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre.
Definitely like to see more diversity in terms of the historical perspective that's offered in our schools, whether it's through the actual social studies curriculum or our ELA curriculum. I think one of the things I'm hearing a lot from teachers is that we change the curriculum seemingly kind of often for them without as much input as they might like to have. So I think really involving our teachers and trusting them as educators to be able to facilitate what kind of curriculum would meet the needs best of their students. So I'd like to see some expansion in terms of their role and how that curriculum is established at all the different grade levels. So I I think one of the largest textbook providers comes from Texas and I think that Michigan is a very drastically different state than Texas. But obviously because they have so many students, they can write the curriculum. So I think we're such an innovative district. I'd love to see us influence that better for our students and our community as we prepare them to launch into a global world. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson.
My thoughts on choosing textbooks, I think we should really rely on teachers to make the best judgment about what textbooks work best for them in their own classrooms. If if they've been teaching for some number of years, they learn what books are good, what what books fit their style. I think it starts with a with a tone at the top that is permissive, that gives them the leeway to choose the books, the textbooks, even, you know, the the literature that they want to teach to their kids. If we allow them to spread their wings a little bit into more diverse areas, books that might be somewhat you know, controversial, there's nothing wrong with that. Some of the best books that I read as a kid were controversial and they're they're my favorites to this day. So giving, you know, some leeway to teachers to pick the best books that fit their style and fit the kids that they have before them, that's the way to, that's the way to start.
Thank you. Mr. Mazurk.
So I think the district actually has a pretty good process that starts with the instructional needs in the various areas, whether it's mathematics or history or or English literature, things like that. And they work through committees that involve parents and other members and it slowly bubbles its way up through the system ultimately gets to the the board. I don't know that I have the expertise to be trying to nitpick about what the right instructional materials are. I'm gonna, I'm gonna trust the experts down there doing it. What I do think we need to do is continue to move more from a physical textbook to the digital world, right? And I think we started to do that where some of the newer things we've been doing, we've been getting the physical text and also getting the digital, you know, versions of that. I think we need to continue and maybe accelerate that particular process because unfortunately, I think we're going to be in online learning for a lot longer than any of us likes to believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Prescott.
Yeah, there is a very robust process that's in place that involves teachers and parents in analyzing any text. And I don't just mean the social studies textbook that's, you know, too interesting, but I mean, in the sixth grade, we want to read such and such new novel. And I think that it's very important to have that public and community involvement, also transparency, also layers of review that of course involve our teachers and more than one teacher. Include include groups across schools so that they can work together. Sometimes social studies might want to work with the English department. All that's very important. But I guess what I would say, I would add into this conversation is that to me, we should be again looking to data and scientific fact because these texts are studied and our teachers have expertise in what works. So it's not just what the content should be, but how are we going to deliver that education in a way that children across a spectrum of abilities can pick it up and actually use it and will pick it up because it's interesting and and attractive to them. So I think those are the guiding principles.
Thank you. And Dr. Votal.
So I am not as informed on the robust book review process, but I have spoken to parents who have sat on the curriculum committee and have been engaged as such. I am sure that there is quite a robust system that involves department chairs across buildings since we have to have continuity of learning between our two middle schools and across all of our elementary schools. So every child who who progresses from one grade to the next is is take is transporting similar knowledge. I I do think, I I am in agreement with with you, Jim, in that I think that, you know, books are pretty static. They are expensive and hard to change and they are, and it, I think a shift to electronic resources would give us more flexibility and more more ability to tailor to our kids. So I think that's doesn't replace textbooks, but certainly is an important compliment.
Okay, thank you to all of you for the really thoughtful answers to the questions that were given to you. We will now start with your closing statements and we're going to do the reverse order that we did with the opening statement. So Ms. Prescott, you will be the first presenter.
Thank you very much. A couple of quick things that I haven't been able to to say that I think may be valuable to folks. I received the honor of the endorsement of our teachers in Northville today in terms of endorsement for this race from the teachers' union. I also received it in 2016 and it is a point of major pride for me because I have worked very, very hard for five years to serve our staff right alongside our our students. I also want to say why I ran for the board originally, which was I'm a lawyer who has worked in 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 the area that schools are most often sued. And I've seen schools be sued and I've been part of cases involving Wild Lake and Berkeley and Brandon and a bunch of different school districts. And I serve in order to make sure that our district isn't distracted and depleted by that kind of unforced error so that we can focus on all the things that you heard about here tonight. So I hope you'll consider returning me to our board. It's very important to me and I consider it a great honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott. Mr. Mazurk.
Again, thank you everyone for for participating and also for listening. As a former board member in 2010, I worked through districts districts last really difficult time when we were on the verge of financial insolvency. We had to work together and we had to make some very tough decisions and and really turned us around from from, it's like you said, almost bankruptcy to really, I believe, one of the top two or three districts in the state from both a financial and both an academic background. I think that my past experiences professionally and on the BOE provide me the knowledge and the skill set to help us deliver on the most important thing, why we're all getting involved, and that is keeping academic achievement as the number one priority for all of our students. And so I thank you for your time and I please humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson.
Hi, I love this district. I want to join the board and be a part of the team. I think we need multi-dimensional board members with multiple touchpoints and connections in this district. Again, to get us through COVID, but at the same time to help our district get to that next level that I think we can get to. I'm deeply invested here. I have kids at Amerenman Hillside and North Northville High School. We've done kids' club, club mid, summer kids' club. My kids run cross-country and swim. I love being on teams. I was a softball coach for years in this district. I've served as the board member on the dance club. As a board member, I would focus on five things, getting through COVID together as a as a community, student health, happiness and inclusion, continuous improvement, top-down support for our wonderful teachers and protecting our funding and finances. I wish we had more time to talk about funding and finances tonight. Thank you, Carrie and Susan and the League of Women Voters. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity tonight. I really appreciate this really rich discussion with all of these potential board members. I think that I'm running for this position. I know that our district does a great job providing education to so many students. And I think there are some kids that are kind of left in the middle that maybe aren't getting what they need. So I think that bringing that perspective of mental health and wellness as well as an understanding of how our own unconscious bias can contribute to some of the challenges that we're seeing in our community. I think bridging those gaps, recognizing the diversity and the richness in our community and really finding our ways to empower students and staff to continue to to work towards those academic goals. I think understanding how athletics and arts really makes for a rich community and a really rich academic experience to prepare people for their future career, their future opportunities. So thanks again. I really appreciate the opportunity tonight and I hope I can count on your vote as well.
Thank you. Mr. Kulkarni.
Yes.
Your closing statement and unmute.
My closing statement is, you know, I I believe that boards should have a multi-disciplinary contribution from different people. Also, it should have the person who is looking at more like a positivity towards diversity. And that's what I bring in there. I'm a technical side, so I like to contribute on technical side, not just academic. Because both academic as well as technical side, they go together. Because when you are going to future, both should to go together, not just academic only. So that's what I contribute towards hands-on training. I like to lead students for a first robotic digital innovation so that they can enjoy, have fun as well as learn how to use the technique to develop themselves, to improve the hardware as well as have a fun. And I thank you very much for League of Women and I contribute and I'm counting vote for me from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ms. Winfield.
I'd like to thank you for this opportunity tonight and just leave you with a few closing thoughts. There are three things that are close and personal to my heart and what I think I can contribute and it's kind of like W I N, first three initials of my name. Wellness is very important. Our kids are facing more and more pressure, I think, than we ever did as as kids. The second is inclusion. I've talked about that a little bit earlier. I think every single child deserves to feel respected and valued. And the last one is a little different. It's nurturing. I am a mother. I love being a mother. Childhood is the shortest period of our life and I think our kids should be nurtured and they should feel safe and protected during this pandemic. And I would love the opportunity to serve you as a board member in 2020 and the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Votal.
Well, it's nothing like batting cleanup, right? There's, there's been a number of really great responses tonight and I too have a couple of closing thoughts. It's fair to say that this has been a trying time for parents and kids and teachers. And we're all striving together to get to the new normal. And when you reflect on this, please take a good look at my unique qualifications. My experience in public health that strengthens our ability to protect the safety of our schools. Our teaching and curricular experience that's relevant to supporting instructional innovation, which is what we're in now. My, I have state, national policy experience, which will be useful for advancing the reputation of our district. Long-term resident, I know, I know this community. Please consider these contributions and I hope that you will support my candidacy when you complete your ballot. I know I can help. Thank you.
Thank you. We would like to thank the members of League of Women Voters who helped with this evening's forum. The forum has been recorded and can soon be viewed on the League's website, L W V NorthwestWayne.org. We also thank the candidates who are running for office. They are asking for your support as they seek a job in the public service sector and we hope voters will listen to their views. We also appreciate the voters of Northville who will be watching this forum to learn about their choices on the November ballot. All of these candidates were invited to participate in the League of Women Voters Voter Guide, a publication that you can access online by visiting vote411.org. Election Day is November the third. If you are not registered to vote, you can do so up through Election Day. Registration 10 days prior to Election Day must be done at the office of your city or township clerk. Unlike the primary, election voters may choose candidates from any party when filling out their ballot. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but all registered voters can vote early by absentee ballot. Remember that you first must fill out and return an absentee ballot application to your city or township clerk before a ballot can be mailed to you. If you need an absentee ballot application, contact your city or township clerk. This concludes our forum for this evening. Thank you to the candidates for participating. Remember, democracy is not a spectator sport. Do your part and be an informed voter and please vote either by absentee ballot or in-person on November 3rd. Good evening and good luck to all of you.